Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the August 8th, 2017 meeting of the Board Trustees of the school town of Speedway. As usual, we are following a prepared agenda which is posted in the back of the room. There are 14 items, and we'll start with item number one. Approve the minutes of July 7th, or July 11th, 2017.
I move that we approve the minutes of the July 11th meeting.
Thanks, Luke.
I'll second.
Abby. Then moved in the second that we approve the minutes of July 11th. Any other comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, five zero.
While you guys sign, do you mind if I go over and touch this keyboard and make sure my... I see that it's gone to the black screen of death. I'm a little worried.
That's a nasty signal. I got a TV at home that does that. Fine?
Fine.
Okay. Item number two is Report of Advanced Placement Testing for 2017. This program has been so successful, it has outgrown the boardroom. And then we will recess the meeting and go to the auditorium to meet with the students and their parents. And then we will come back and Mr. Borum will make the presentation.
And you're recessing. What's over there is not official. And if Mr. Borum is still with them, we may need to move him in on your agenda. But recess?
Okay, I will reconvene the meeting.
Mr. President, I'm gonna recommend that you skip number two. And when Mr. Borum becomes available, we...
So we'll go to item three, which is Recognize Four-Star School.
And I will ask Dr. Trebley to come forward. And I would ask that Mr. Disney and Mr. Roseborough come forward because, and I say this sincerely, yet again, yet again, Speedway Junior High School's been a four-star school. So I will turn this over to Dr. Trebley.
In 1988, nearly 30 years ago, the Department of Education came up with an award called, "We're Going to Recognize Four-Star Schools." Those four-star schools include the following: You have to have academic success. So you have to be an A school. You have to have growth. And you must do well on your state standardized testing. That is a hard thing to do for any school in the state of Indiana. Forty-one of schools received and recognized a four-star school. And Speedway Junior High is one of those 41 schools. So it's with great honor and a great pleasure to recognize our staff, our students, and our administration from last year, the leaders of the school, Principal John Disney and Assistant Principal Rick Roseborough. Congratulations, guys. Here's your awards. It's not glued on. Hold tight.
You know, getting a four-star school is not necessarily the two of us. It's great parents, great teachers. It's a combination of several things. But just proud to be part of this process. And I know we've turned it over to some great hands and look forward to some great things in the future.
All I can say is the pressure's on. Thanks, Mr. Disney. No, but I'm cherishing the challenge. And we're off to a good start, I can assure you. Busy start, but hopefully I'll keep the ship going in the right direction and appreciate the honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item four is 2018 Enrollment Update.
And enough celebration, Mr. Disney. Tell us about our enrollment. How many students do we have? And how easy is it to count them?
We have currently, well, this is probably untrue. It says 800, or 1,821, but I know that was about noon today, and that has increased. It's noon. But as of noon today, we had 1,018 and 21. And how hard is it to count? Pretty difficult because it changes from kids coming in and kids going out. But I'm pretty confident a really bright guy told me that's probably going to go up. So I got a feeling it's going to continue to go in the upward direction.
I want to point out something. I want you to look at the number of students in the senior class. And I want you to look at the number of students in the junior class. And I want you to look at the number of kindergartners and first graders. Whatever enrollment is this year, which it's going to be about 17, or 1840 to 1850, when it's all said and done, it's going up next year, too. Speedway was largest in 1973, about 2,000 students. One of us sitting here was teaching or going, was that Mr. Smith? It was as big as we've ever been, but we're on our way back. We really are. So, you know, we have one class today that popped up to 27. We'll make sure we have a teacher assistant in there. We just don't have a room, let alone teachers. But otherwise, awfully good numbers.
Remind me what the plus one in the parentheses is?
What that means is, on the computer, that teacher would show as having 16, but that one student is actually a student who's receiving services. They're actually a private school student receiving, so our special ed count is right.
Gotcha.
You also have out at the right, some numbers in the functional program. And if you look, it's first grade, and you go across, it says two students. Those are actually kids who live in the both, or in the Wheeler district. Wheeler, Wheeler. But they're counted in the special classroom, not in that classroom number. Now, having said that, is that right, Mr. Disney?
The two kids from Wheeler are included in the numbers in Wheeler's total that you see there, 20, 20, 19.
But they're not included in any individual class size.
That's correct. That's correct.
And we do have the pluses. Are those the students that we have that are going to, say, the blind school, the deaf school, Wayne Township programs? They're out, I'm sorry, not private school, but special needs. They're not in our classroom. But we have to show them as if they were in... The computer doesn't know in-room or out-of-room.
If you look at the bottom of this document, you'll see that 15 of those students are serviced off of school property.
We will not get smaller. It will continue to grow. To about the first week of September, and then we'll plateau, and it'll come back down a little. If things go as they've had for the last forever. Want to remind you that it was in 2010 we were talking about not wanting to go under 1,500 students because of the talk of consolidation. This is so much better.
Yep. I agree. We'll have a better idea come Labor Day. Some people still think that's when school starts. I don't know, they're in a silo somewhere. But anyway, good news. Okay. Item five is to conduct a public hearing on our 2018 Capital Projects Plan.
And as President, you need to open up for public comment. We've gone through the Capital Projects Plan, and then take comment, and then close.
Okay, I will convene the hearing. Any comments? Okay, not...
You sure?
No comments from the audience?
You sure?
I will close the hearing. And then we approve that in the next meeting.
Yeah, you can't vote on it. That's just public comment. It comes back to vote. That's why we're having a second meeting in August on the 22nd.
All right. You're up. Item six.
I would ask you to get out your budget notebooks. I'll work on the...
Is the 2018 school budget. Ken?
I'm gonna actually work right up here. I'll tell you what, I'll try, I'll move the, and set that there.
Can you see?
Okay. Do you have me, Bill? Okay. Okay. Five funds. General fund, largest operating fund, always start with revenue. The largest part of revenue comes from the state, $12,270,000. That revenue is based on an enrollment count of 1,790. If we in fact have 60 more kids than that, that revenue number will go up. We don't count on that revenue going up. We plan on budgeting for it to be low. Number two, we have a cash balance of about $2,292,000 on hand to spend if we need it. We try not to. Next year, we'll get about $25,000 worth of reimbursement for summer school. We are one of the few districts that still runs summer school. It cost us about 40, but we think the $15,000 investment is worth it. Rental revenue is the air we're selling out there over the football field, cell towers. We'll get some revenue from ECA, people renting the gyms and small rentals. If we need to, as you know, we have a self-insurance fund. And if we have a large year for severance or insurance issues, we can transfer up to $500,000 if we need to. We put away money for that. We try not to. And so consequently, we have the potential to have $15,203,000 to spend. Where does the money go? Well, regular instruction, classroom teachers is about 53% of the budget, or a little over 8 million. About 800,000, special education teachers. We produce about $60,000 for summer instruction. We have enrichment, which is some of our, well, like the AP classes that we offer is an enrichment. The summer enrichment programs, the money we put in costs us somewhere in the neighborhood. The foreign language that we teach is an enrichment. We have about $83,000 in remediation, a small percentage of the budget. Those are teacher assistance. The students we send over to Area 31 Career Center, and the students we send to those special ed programs, that's the tuition for those. Instructional supports, about $374,000 at your homeschool advisors, at the elementary or secretaries, your staff. School administration, those are the school principals. District administration, that whole half million dollars goes to me. No. Goes to the entire staff. Operation and maintenance of about $1,560. And we do budget $30,000 for transportation in case our levy comes in too low in transportation. Just a little bit down here, it's one of the things I really think is important to show. And we have the pie graph there for representation. But when you talk about dollars that go to instruction versus dollars that go to people like me, it's about 81% of the budget's going into schools, and about 19% is coming to the district administration. The standard is 65/35. Questions about general fund? You all have done this before, and there's not anything that's too much of a secret here, but I do believe it's pretty... We have a referendum. The referendum has no state support. These are all local taxes. Our local property tax of about $3,772,000, that's coming from a projected rate of .5077. We have some excise tax from car sales of $100,000. We estimate $15,000 in commercial vehicle excise tax, the vans that run on the road. Banks pay about $130,000, and we have a small cash balance in that fund for a total of about $4 million. Where's it going? Well, Newby Elementary School and the junior high on regular instruction, special ed instruction, same two places, and a lot of teacher assistance. We do use that money also for enrichment. That's our junior high Spanish teacher. Student support, which is our junior high counseling, and our assistant principal, which is no longer Rick, he left. That's no shame. Administration costs, security services, that's the SRO. Student transportation, we double budget here. We really needed that this year because we didn't have enough kids to have the latchkey program at all of our schools. So we had to take kids from Fisher over to Newby, and from Allison over to Newby, and we had to transport them. They would go to Newby in the morning, we'd bring them over to the school, and then after school, we'd take them back over to Newby. We have to offer latchkey, but that's still a lot less than trying to run a latchkey program. So that's... And we have coaches and athletic program that cost us about a half a million dollars. And so we balance at $4 million on each side. What I always like to do with this is, what's the referendum costing? And about a quarter of our houses are somewhere at $94,000 or less. But if your home costs $94,000, that's about $12 a month to have that. The second quartile is centered on $107,000, that's about $15 a month. The third quartile is centered at about $120,000, that's about $18 a month. And if you have a home value at $145,000, it's about $25 a month. I sat with a realtor today, folks, about $180,000 is where the highest, most expensive houses in Speedway. Kyle's nodding, that's weird. But home values are going up. So that's what the referendum costs to the person who's living in a home sending a kid to school. It's a little more for the businesses in the apartments. It's a lot more. Questions on referendum? Capital projects, we've already went over, so I won't take a lot of time. We know we're talking about hopefully a $2,600,000 revenue. We'll never get that. We'll never get $2,449. We won't get the rate of .426. It'll be more like .326, and that'll be about $500,000 less. But we're in this unique year. We're next year, everything about school funding is changing, and they're going away from the different funds, and they're going to combine education fund and operations fund. And they're going to base that new rate on whatever your last rate was. And so we gotta get our rate as high as we can. That's just a hedge against the future. First thing we have to do is write off the property tax caps that people won't pay. So that's an expense. I estimate $78,000. The DLGF estimates $126,000. And Marion County estimates around 93. It's going to be closer to 78. It definitely won't be 126. We spent about $140,000 on software, and that's maintaining things like the Microsoft license and the license for the Power School and the licenses. Technology personnel, 22% of the budget, about $523,000. We pay utilities at about 354,114. That's about 15% of the budget. That's just a, that's a stable number. The maintenance number is estimated really high, $640,000. We can probably do it for about $480 if we need to. Professional services have to do with the ability we have to plan for maybe larger projects in the future. Building improvements, $390,000. And that's, more than anything for us, technology, as we try to put more and more Chromebooks into students' hands. We lease and do copier supplies for about $65,000. $375,000 for equipment, and we always keep about $40,000 for when a light pole breaks. Happens. But we've gone over that in great detail last month. So that's the Capital Projects Plan. Transportation, which is pretty simple. We ask for a levy of $111,000. Excise, commercial vehicle, and financial could get another 10. We have about $6,000 in there, that's $130,000. We buy a contract for the, and we built in this time, the transport for the kids in the after-school program of about $109,000. And we are increasingly putting bus monitors on our little, but they provide the buses, we put a person on there to help some of these kids with very significant disabilities. I can tell you that the expenses will be $10,000 lower than that, and the levy will be about $10,000 lower. And that levy is less than two cents. We're starting to really get down into the very, very minuscule things. We'll have no debt rate again, because the only thing we have in debt are the unpaid textbook and workbooks of people who don't pay that and move out of the district. And from our project three years ago, we still have $31,000 sitting in the bank, so we just keep eating that up. So we didn't have a rate last year, we won't have a rate this year, and we won't have a debt rate next year. And we may still not have a debt rate the year after that. But other people might transfer that or use it another way. We've taken it from the taxpayers. We don't want to ask them for anymore. Better to keep it right where it is. Rainy day fund. Pretty simple. Over here, rainy day for me. We have a cash balance, $80,000. If we need to spend it, we can spend $80,000 on contracted services. We'll transfer money in and start to drive that back up. I want to remind you, that's what we used to pay for the Wheeler addition. No bond, no debt. We paid cash by building that up. When you look at those enrollment numbers, does it not make clear that we better start building it up again? Here's the key page. What we're going to advertise for rate, referendum, 50 cents, Capital Projects, 42, transportation, a penny, for a total of about 95 cents. It will not be that high. We always advertise the rate high. I will tell you, I believe the rate will come in something like .84. That's two cents higher than last year, when we had excess levies driving down some of our other rates. But it is still, in 2018, it is still nine cents lower than it was in 2014. We're doing what? We are fiscally, that will be the lowest school tax rate in Marion County. Might be close with Pike. But remember, they got $6 billion worth of assessed value, and we've got 600 million. What do we do with the money? Well, again, general instruction, teachers and substitutes, salary and benefits and supplies, special ed, teachers' salary and benefits, supplies. Summer instruction, teachers and assistants, enrichment instructions, about one and a half teachers, their salary and benefits. Special programs are the severe special ed program, vocational ed, online. Student support, counselors, nurse, salary and benefits. Instructional support, curriculum director, and the librarians. School administration, our principals. Student transportation is a supplement. Central office is the treasurer, the payroll clerk, and all the supplies. Support administration happens to be me and you, the superintendent and the school board. You're the smaller part of that. Operations and maintenance, the custodians, the repairs and maintenance, the supplies. I do the referendum because I want to point out that if the referendum ever fails, and it's got five more, six, five full years after this second year, what are we paying for with referendum? We're having a full-day kindergarten program, we're paying for Newby Elementary School, as well as junior high and senior high school aides, salary and benefits. We have our special ed program, the moderate program that we could put those students out into tuition. We have the academic team coaches, all of our summer school enrichment, all our teacher aides in remediation, our guidance director, our homeschool advisor, our graduation coach, our instructional support, including the junior high media specialist, the whole AP testing program you just saw, as well as the principal at Newby, the assistant principal at the junior high, and the junior high transportation assistant. I don't want to put a name on that, but it's one person. School resource officer, and the athletic director, all the coaches, all the summer swim programs, all the game workers. If the referendum doesn't pass, that all is what's being paid by that. And it doesn't mean all that has to go away. There are other ways we'd cut funds. Increase class sizes, and reduce teachers, reduce pay, reduce salary, reduce benefits. All those things are options, not very pleasant ones. But for me, there's the page that matters. We're going to advertise the tax rate of 95 cents. It's going to come in 84 cents. Last year, it came in 8253, or 8252. I predicted .83. We advertise .9. Now, you don't have to approve this budget. What you have to do is, if there are any changes you'd like to see, you need to let me know, because next Monday night, next, I'm sorry, Tuesday, August 22nd, at our next board meeting, I'll be giving this budget presentation to the town, who technically adopts our budget. Doing that at 6 o'clock, they put us on first so that we can be here by 6:30. If any of you want to stop by, Terry's agreed to be there as the board president to do the town budget meeting, if any of you want to be there. But undoubtedly, the real business of the board is at 7:30 here on August 22nd. So know that you'd be welcome there, but if you have to, you know, make that choice or anything, that town is, the president will suffice. So I actually, Mr. Disney will be here getting ready for the school board meeting. Dr. Trebley will be with me presenting the budget. And Nancy, the treasurer, Ms. Johnson, will be with me with the school board, and we'll have Terry there so that if there are any hard questions, he can answer them.
Well, Ken, I'd just like to say thank you and congratulations for being such a good steward of our tax dollars. I think this really reflects well on the town and our values, and I appreciate the focus of putting the dollars towards the classroom and instruction and not always towards administration.
Make no mistake, that's very kind of you to say. What the public generally doesn't realize is, you as a board, everything I've just told you, you completely understand in that condensed version. You've been doing this right along with me. There's not a thing here you're not interested in. That is not the case in all school boards, to have that level of understanding. So thank you for the compliment, but thank you for looking through it and double checking it, because you like to know what you're doing and where you're going. And this, quite honestly, this predates you and I, both. I can't speak for the first superintendent, but from 48 on, I'm pretty sure, starting with Mr. Jordan, they have pretty good, Dr. Jordan, they have a pretty good idea. I'm just trying to keep up the...
And I'm just quite impressed that it, I want you to know that this is the second year that I've done this with a PowerPoint presentation on a video screen, and not with an overhead projector.
We're very impressed.
So I want some credit for modernizing.
Your technology.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I see Mr. Borum has returned.
Yes. We'll go back to item number two, if that's okay with you. Report of the Advanced Placement Testing for 2017. Mr. Borum?
All right, again, thank you for having me. We just had our recognition for our students. It took some time to disperse all of those checks for our kids. They were excited, and again, I thank you for your support. Just to go, I want to just kind of, again, go over some brief details of the AP program. Mr. Hall spoke during the recognition ceremony about where we've gone, where we were, and where we're, where we are today. Specific numbers. We had a total, going to 2010, it was 15, we had 15 students taking AP exam. We gave 21 exams. And of those 15 students, we had four students earn a score of three or higher. In 2013, I'm going to kind of... In two thousand thirteen, I'm going to kind of jump some years, and then I'll stop and answer any questions that you may have. Uh, in two thousand thirteen, we, we became a part of the AP Tippin Grant, and we had already, um, started to give an incentive for our students who were earning a qualifying score even before we became a part of the, the AP Tippin Grant, which is an initiative to, to try to get more underrepresented groups in AP classes earning qualifying scores, and, um, and, and then offer support to those students, uh, to, to be able to be successful in those AP classes. So, uh, we had already started to, to do that incentive. So, in two thousand, the, the actual parts, the years that we were part of the cohort actually started two thousand thirteen AP exams. We had a hundred and three students taking AP exam. We gave a hundred and ninety exams, and of those students, we had fifty-four students earn a qualifying score of, of three or higher. Two thousand fourteen was probably our most, um, successful year in terms of the amount of students, the ratio in terms of the amount of students who earned a qualifying score and the amount, and, and the amount of students that actually took an AP exam. In two thousand fourteen, we actually gave two hundred and sixty-five exams, and of those, uh, uh, and a hundred and twenty-five students took an AP, uh, test, and of those students, sixty-seven students earned an AP exam. And so, now we move forward, and I won't go through each year, but now we move forward to two thousand seventeen, and I'll compare two thousand seventeen to last year because if you may remember, we had the director of the AP Tippin Grant from Notre Dame come and speak to the board, and she talked about, um, ju, just the, it, the, the incremental changes that we've had over the years of our students earning qualifying scores. And we weren't certain if we were, if we had reached our maximum in terms of those students earning a qualifying score. So, last year, two thousand sixteen, we gave a hundred and thirty-three students, two hundred and sixty-one AP exams, and we only had forty-seven students earn a qualifying score. And when I say only, that is still a, a, a great, uh, phenomenal number, particularly for Marion County. If you compare our AP scores to other schools in our county, we're again, um, probably leading the pack in that area. And this year, two thousand seventeen, when we in, introduced the freshman AP World History Course for our, our ninth grade kids, to try to begin to get them incorporated to the rigors of an AP course, uh, we were hoping to really reap the dividends of that AP program for our freshman-level students as they continue to progress through high school. Uh, we had a total of three hundred and sixty-six, we gave three hundred and sixty-six AP exams to a hundred and ninety students, and of those hundred and ninety students, eighty students earned an AP, uh, qualifying score. And so, that is, uh, that, that ratio or that percentage is forty-two point one percent. And again, I want to, um, reiterate the, after you, you, you had left the ceremony, we spoke about, to the, to the group about the benefits of earning a two on the AP exam. We had nineteen freshmen earn a two on the AP exam. The thirteen freshmen earned the qualifying scores, and I believe we had eight kids earn a one. So, again, we, we're really hoping that those students that earn a two, as, as freshman students, now they're not as worried when they take the AP US History or the AP Biology as tenth-grade students, will know what it takes, the formatting of the test, the preparation, and we're hoping to see our numbers just increase. Um, I think we will be able to hopefully exceed the goal, the goal Mr. Hall, Hall spoke of in terms of, uh, I think you said a hundred and fifty kids, Mr. Hall?
Like, see, a hundred and fifty tests.
Tests, yeah, sorry. A hundred and fifty exams. Um, and, uh, so we're really hoping that we exceed that next year, just from the investment that we've had this fresh, with this freshman group, the class of two thousand twenty. Um, that AP World History Course has grown this year. Both sections are larger than they were for the class of two thousand twenty. Uh, we have one, uh, the total group of students taking a AP course in terms of freshman students, um, is fifty-three. Again, if you're looking at our, our freshman student body, that, we only have a hundred and thirty-six freshmen, and fifty-three of those students are taking an AP World, World History Course. So, I wanted to just kind of give you some brief information about where our AP program started, where we're, where we are today. Um, we added actually three AP courses for the cla, uh, for the year two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Um, I want to say three. Um, it was AP, uh, for sixteen, seventeen, I'm sorry. AP World History, AP Econ, and AP Environmental Science. And so, again, we have, we have really put our money where our mouth is for our AP program. Uh, we're, 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 the, the only AP courses that we don't offer are AP Psychology, AP Computer Science, and I believe AP Music Theory. Um, there, I think, believe there's, believe there's an AP Seminar, uh, AP Course, but for a school our size to offer that many AP courses and that many, uh, core classes, I think again speaks to this district and this community and, and the investment our board and our, our administration have put in this program. So, with that said, I don't want to talk too long. I want to make sure I'm, I don't, um, overstay, overstay my time. So, if any questions that you may have, I will, I will feel free to answer those questions at this time.
Mine's just a comment. I, and it was mentioned in there, and I'd like it mentioned in here, I guess, how the, this three or above actually affects their college. Is it for college credits?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Um, be, be, if, and I, if you go back to the, the, the history of where we were trying to go years ago, we had a dual-credit program. Um, and a lot of our core classes, English, math, and science, our students were able to earn dual credits, um, and they were, they were, they were phenomenal. They did save our families money when our students were actually, uh, going off to college. Uh, but what we were finding was, was that a lot of our students, even though they were in the dual-credit classes, were, um, were not feeling as though they were, were not feeling as prepared in their first year of, 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 of college in, in terms of their, their, their math, their science, their English. So, we made a, we made a, a decision to do a one-eighty turn, and we've really invested heavily in our AP program because students who earn a two or higher, um, there's, there's research that shows these students are better prepared for college-level work, college-level coursework. Um, and the, the fact that our students are still earning those dual credits as, at the same rate that they were earning it when we just had our dual-credit program, I, I think speaks volumes. If you want to think of the amount of money saved for in-state tuition, as Mr. Hall said, is approximately a thousand dollars. So, a student, uh, we have, we have, we've had students that have earned seven, uh, qualifying scores on AP exams, uh, and those credits are transferable all across America, not just, like, the dual credits were only transferable in the state of Indiana. Some private schools did not have to accept the dual credits, but with AP, that program is recognized across the country. So, our students that may be going to a private institution, or students that may be going out of, out of state, are able to, to reap the benefits of that, 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 that college credit. And if a student is going out of state, those, those college credits are twice as much as what it is for the, uh, in-state tuition. So, our students are saving thousands and thousands of dollars, um, by earning these qualifying scores and preparing themselves for, for the next level after they graduate high school.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. B.
And this, and this also is more in the way of a comment, but we had talked as a board, um, perhaps the last meeting, maybe the one before that, about our continuing commitment to the teachers and to, um, and, and our understanding that when we started in the Tippin Program, that involved education of the teachers and working with the teachers to better themselves to teach these classes. And we have a real commitment to contin, you know, to maintaining that. And I think, you know, it would be my hope that, if I was, you know, a AP fill-in-the-blank teacher, that I would look at this and, and start spending time figuring out what I could do to help those two students become three students.
Right, absolutely.
And so, that is something that, you know, as an administrator, I hope you will take back to the teachers and, you know, both the expectation that they continue to improve their teaching and what they can do, and their, and the understanding that they're supported.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Um, just to kind of piggyback off, off, off that comment, um, our next PLCs will be where we're actually mining through the, our AP data, looking very closely at everyone's scores, from the ones to the twos, to, to the threes. Um, and speaking of that commitment, we're also an affiliate, uh, part of the AP Tippin Grant. Even though we're no longer with the grant, we have made a commitment to continue to, uh, to, in, support our teachers and send them back for professional development. Any new teacher that teaches an AP course goes to the AP Summer Institute, which is an intensive, uh, eight-to-nine-hour, three-day program where they learn, uh, the, the subject-specific information that they need to be successful in their AP program. Our stu, our teachers still have access to our mock testing, um, support, where they actually go and score AP, uh, AP exams and, and, and are able to bring back that data. We give AP mock exams to all of our students in every subject, um, so our, uh, our English, our math, our science. They are all taking AP mock exams, where the teacher is then taking that mock exam and saying, okay, on this mock exam, you would have earned a two. This is what you need to do to try to get to a three. And trying to be very strategic in how we, uh, move forward and making sure that our, our, just incrementally move forward. Our threes go to fours, our twos go to threes, our one, and continuing to, to try to make sure that we don't become complacent, but continue to strive for excellence.
I have a couple of comments. This is the first year we haven't had the students and their parents in this room, and my comment when I walked into the auditorium was, wow.
Yes.
The fire marshal would definitely not like to come in here.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
And the other thing, I don't know which, whether it was Mr. Hall or you said, made a comment about the exams are too hard, and I saw a couple of them shaking their head like, no, they weren't. So, that's a good sign.
Yes, absolutely. Um, the, the ceremony, we have, I have twenty-six checks remaining out of the eighty kids. A significant por, uh, portion, uh, we're, we're here to be recognized and to pick up their, their, their checks. Um, and yes, this, we, we expect this to just continue to grow, um, to have, this was the first, it's been, I had to spend a lot of time just distributing the checks. Before, I could just stand right outside the door, call some names, and our kids would come and, and pick up the checks, but that took a little time, and that's a good, a great problem to have, so.
Well, one thing that might impact us down the line, whether it's two thousand twenty-two or twenty, that, that AP teachers have to either have a master's degree in, in the subject or so many college-credit hours of teaching or of that, so.
That's dual-credit?
That's actually, that's very, we have two programs, dual-credit and AP.
Those are AP?
And it, no, it's, it's actually the dual-credit.
Okay, well, that's no, that's not.
But it is an issue.
Yes, it is.
Because quite frankly, I, I'll just, I'll just put a name on it. There, our, our percentage-wise and score-wise most successful teacher in this district is Ms. Kilgore. Okay, she's retired. She comes back in to teach this class. Her overall average is phenomenal. She can't teach a dual-credit because she's not a math major. She's a PE major with a math minor. So, while she can't teach dual-credit for Ivy Tech, and especially after two thousand twenty-two, she can teach AP and have the greatest percentage of success and the highest scores in this district, which only goes to say the teacher can make a significant difference. And so, this is, this has earned student success, but it is a tremendous reflection on the instructors.
Last thing, this is a, a minor thing, but I think it's neat, the banners we have there because some people visually, when they walk in and aren't familiar with the school and see where we started and the list of names on there, and then look where we are now, for them, that's one of the things that, that hits home, I think, with people who walk in this building.
Absolutely. Um, and the banner has been ordered, and we have, it will be much lower than last year's banner. Um, the other part that we've added is, and from this, last year's banner was the first year we also, um, recognize our students who were AP scholars. And just so you know that information, um, just very quickly, let me make sure I don't, I read that correctly. Our AP scholars, um, an AP scholar, there's, there's levels to the AP scholar designation. So, a student is an AP scholar if they receive a three or higher on three or more AP exams. A student is a, um, AP scholar with honor if they, uh, have an average score of three-point-two-five on all AP exams taken, and a score of three or more, three or higher on four or more of these exams. An AP scholar with distinction is granted to students who receive an average score of at least a three-point-five on all AP exams taken, and a score of three or higher on five or more of these exams. And the highest honor is a national AP scholar, and that's granted to students in the U.S. who receive an average score of at least a four on AP exams taken, and a score of four, of, of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. For the two thousand seventeen group, we had, and this is that entire designation, not, um, but we had seventeen students that we would designate as AP scholars. We had one national AP scholar, a student who earned seven, eight qualifying scores, and they were four or more on each one of those exams. And we had two students who were, um, AP scholars with distinction. And again, we do designate that on the banner as well, and we start doing, as we continue to go through the program, and our students continue to take more and more AP exams and do extremely well, we wanted to make sure that they were recognized for not only getting a qualifying score, but really doing a phenomenal job over the course of their, their high school career.
Well, and one of the things about that, that, you know, I assume that this is being done, but I think it's really important that both students and parents understand that piece of this because it is a massive admission difference-maker into colleges. And that is something that I'm, I'm just so proud of what the district has done. When my two thousand ten and two thousand twelve graduates graduated, my, especially my two thousand ten graduate, we didn't have the classes for him to have those distinctions. And that was a, that was a, a very real issue for him in applying to colleges. And, um, you know, every single application asks you to mark that, where you are in that hierarchy.
Right.
And so, you know, not only do our kid, not only do we want our kids understanding that, hey, you know, this prepares me and this, but it's going to help me get admitted. And not only does it, you know, give me, you know, cut costs.
Right.
But it will actually help give me more options to, um, apply to schools.
Yeah, especially our more competitive schools and competitive programs.
I mean, it's absolutely, that's, it's just huge that we can put that in our kids', you know, basket of, of presentation.
Absolutely. Yeah, that was mentioned at our senior meeting before the open house today about that distinction, um, and just trying to make sure that students and parents are aware that, you know, the, a freshman parent, for instance, you know, uh, Mr. Bickel, your son, can be striving for, uh, this is a goal I have as I continue to progress through high school, through the four years of school.
Well, and they also, I mean, part of that, of course, is understanding that, you know, the average.
Mm-hmm.
So, you can't be messing around.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
So, if, if I care about this, you have to know coming in, you have to know as an eighth grader, that going into that freshman class, I gotta be for real about this because, you know, I—
Yeah, you get a one, you know, it can, it can impact that average.
That, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so, yeah, we will also, lastly, just, um, we did that, that brief recognition for the students, um, that earn the qualifying scores. Mr. Zartman and I have already spoken. We're going to try to do something from, uh, either during an AC period or during, um, a pep rally to make sure that these students are recognized again because, uh, we want the entire student body to, because when they can see their friends and see students that they, that they sit in class with or have known throughout middle school, taking AP's, uh, class and earn a qualifying score, um, hopefully that is motivation for them to also recognize that they can do that as well. We had a young lady that just, um, whose mom said, this is amazing that my daughter got a, a qualifying score on this calculus, uh, test, and that was a testament to Mrs. Kilgore, and, 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 and I don't know if she had that belief when she started with the class, but she earned a qualifying score and was, was able to be recognized. And again, our students to have that faith and to know they have that support will only help us move forward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Have a good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you.
And feel free to leave.
Yes.
You can get back down there to meet the teacher now.
Yes, so.
Yep, and maybe those of Brownie left.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Borm.
Okay, back on, we'll go to item seven, which is approved resolution authorizing the superintendent to reduce the two thousand seventeen budget appropriation across all funds as needed.
And again, we're back to the exciting part, the budget, as opposed to these silly human things. Let's concentrate here. The resolution you've adopted this each year, what it essentially does, and the title is, is, it simply says, whereas the Board of Trustees desires to protect and ensure the eighteen budget will be funded, you authorize me, the superintendent, to both reduce the two thousand seventeen budget appropriations, spend less this year, so we have the money in eighteen. And if we can't spend enough, but reduce seventeen enough, we will reduce eighteen, but we try very hard not to do that. And these are all based on the uncertainty of not knowing exactly what the assessed value is, not knowing what exactly the property tax cap is.
is, not knowing what exactly the property tax cap is. But this has worked well for the past 20 years, and I'm recommending you adopt this resolution again as written, you all have it presented.
Tom?
I'll move that we approve the resolution authorizing the superintendent to reduce the 2017 budget appropriations across all funds as needed.
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comment? Okay, then moved and seconded that we approve the resolution authorizing the superintendent to reduce the 2017 budget appropriation across all funds as needed. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, five-zero.
I need two signed. Look carefully and sign above your name, Mr. Smith. After the board members to your left sign, it'll need to come back to you to attest that these are the people who signed it. And then if you could then pass that down to the end of the table, and if either assistant superintendents lose it, we'll go ahead and cut their salary. Should I not move? Yes, you should not.
I'll take care of that. I'm just going to sign it now, but better.
That's what I said, in case Debbie and I switch it up down here.
You can attest and sign both, you know who they are. They're slippery characters, but not that much.
We are. We have kinds of schemes down here.
Something about, I eat brains, I'm safe. Just needs indication of somebody who's really smart.
That was great.
Okay, let's move on to item eight is approve extended contracts.
And each year, we have people who work additional days. The recommendation is that we approve Joseph Smith, the guidance, Joe Smith, Phil Joseph, Guidance Counselor at the junior high for five days. Kevin Burke is Assistant Director to help with transportation after school. Joe Troyer, the high school media specialist for five days. Guidance Counselor Chuck Bennett, five days. And Misty Davenport, high school counselor, five days. They work those days and then much more to help our students. In addition, we'd ask that you approve the retention of Kyle Owen and Sarah Ackerman to teach our Genius Hour period. They actually get the equivalent of half of one period's pay. The recommendation is to approve all of those extended contracts. I can say with genuine sincerity, we get our money's worth from these people during these times and then some.
Luke?
I move that we approve the extended contracts as presented.
Laura?
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded that we approve the extended contracts for Smith, Kevin Burke, Joe Troyer, Charles Bennett, and Misty Davenport, as well as the half, the period for Kyle Owen and Craig Fugate to teach the--
Sarah Ackerman.
Oh, you changed that?
Yeah, we, Sarah Ackerman.
Sarah.
This morning.
Okay. All those in favor? Motion carries, five-o. Okay, item nine is to appoint a member to the Speedway Public Library Board.
And our recommendation is to reappoint Mr. Scott Spear to a second term on the library board. He, Scott, has kindly expressed his willingness to continue serving in that appointment if you're inclined to appoint him.
Tom?
I'll move that we appoint, reappoint Scott Spear to the Speedway Public Library Board.
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded that we approve the reappointment of Scott Spear to the Speedway Public Library Board. Any comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, five-zero. Item ten, acknowledgment of grants received.
I would recommend, Mr. President, that you accept by consensus sixty-four thousand six-hundred-sixty-five dollars and ninety-six cents in grants, and I believe every bit of will. All these are grants other than our Coca-Cola contract payment. Not a big vending month for us and Coke.
Yeah. By consensus.
Very much.
Okay. I guess we thank Coke. All right, item eleven is resignations.
I recommend that you accept the resignations of Ms. Elizabeth Geisting, Ms. Paige Coors, and Mr. Tim Cooper as presented.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations for resignations, or resignations for Elizabeth Geisting, Paige Coors, and Tim Cooper as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. I assume there's no comment here. So it's been moved and seconded that we approve the, accept the resignations of Elizabeth Geisting, Paige Coors, and Tim Cooper as presented. All those in favor? Motion carries, five-o. Okay, item twelve is employment recommendations.
And I will make this a brief recommendation, and rather than read through the dossier you all have had, everyone's background information. We're recommending Ms. April Clay to be an elementary teacher, Mr. Jonathan Mummer to be our elementary art teacher, Mr. Paul Schaefer to be junior high math teacher, Ms. Kylie Bragalone to be an elementary teacher, and Ms. Renee Rhodes to be an elementary teacher, and Mr. Randy Miller to be elementary teachers. In addition, we have several extra duty assignments. You have the full list. People who are new to us or new to positions, not teachers. Catherine Stroke to be the assistant cheer coach at the junior high. Catherine Emerson to be the girls' golf coach. Janet Disney actually to be the assistant academic pursuit coach. Jasmine Johnson, Lori Duran, Allison McKay, Elizabeth Denny, Jordan Deaver, and Lee Shively to all fill special projects at halftime at Speedway High School. Kylie Kevey to be the eighth-grade volleyball coach. Tina Merly to be the senior class sponsor. Misty Davenport to be the freshman class sponsor. And tell me, John, who did we approve just today? Did we add one more to this today from Mr. Roseborough that's on your list? Oh, no, that, it's not there. We'll have it next month. We made a change on your list that was actually, we had an incorrect name, Tim Cooper on there, but he's not on your final list. I'd recommend you approve all of those employment recommendations. I'd recommend recommendations.
Laura?
I move that we approve the employment recommendations as specified.
Oh, you don't want to read them all?
I'll second.
Thank you, Debbie. Been moved and seconded that we approve the hiring of Jonathan Mummer for elementary art, Paul Schaefer, junior high math, and the following elementary teachers, April Clay, Kylie Bragalone, Renee Rhodes, and Randy Miller, and then the ECA ones as were listed. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, four-zero.
I would, I would say, just thank you, Ken, to the extent that this year you guys were involved in, and I'm sure it perhaps has not yet ended, the shuffling that has to happen. I know, you know, there was a last-minute day before classes started, we thought we had a situation covered, and it changed, and we scrambled, and, but, you know, classes started with teachers in them and qualified impressive teachers in them. And so that's, that's something that we have come to rely on and really appreciate from you.
Thank you. That is very kind of you to note because it is, it is our goal to open school with a teacher for every student, a student in every desk, and, and everything in line. And it, this year was as challenging as it ever has been. Thank you all, those that could attend the teacher breakfast, because you know I was scrambling that morning on that. And when I say "I," the fact of the matter is, I get worried and Kyle and John do the work. And that's good for them. They're much younger than I am.
Okay, item thirteen is recognition of visitors.
Welcome.
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 And is there any other business?
I just want to make everyone aware, we will meet again on August 22nd for Capitol Projects, but on Wednesday, August 23rd at 5:30, the School Corporation will host the Speedway families who host Japanese students from Montegi at the MCL. It's a great thing for those kids because they come and have an American menu that you wouldn't believe. So if you want to stop in, you can, you're welcome, but I also understand that this is no small week for you as board members committing to school business, and you are allowed to spend time with your spouses.
What's the time on that?
5:30. Well, but Laura, 5:30 if the plane gets in on time, if traffic moves correctly, if ever, you know, I'm thinking six realistically, and we'll probably be there till seven, 7:30. So anytime you get to, and I, if nothing else, have a piece of cake. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Did you want to mention anything about that meeting in September?
Oh, you know, that's very good. You have a note at the end. The Indiana Department of Education is having congressional meetings, and they have one scheduled for our congressional district in September, and I believe it's over at the Wayne Township Convention Center. I, I don't, they've put out no agenda, they just say it's a meeting to talk to people. As soon as I get an agenda, I'll let you know. Here's the thing, because it's so close, you know, typically I like to invite everybody to come here, we'll meet, we'll drive somewhere. If you want to come, I would suggest you drop in. That way you could come as late as you want and exit if you want, if you even, but without an agenda, I don't even--
It's not this.
Yes, that. What is, can you tell what that's about from that? Of course, you don't have your glasses on.
No, but where's--
I believe that's the, you know, Wayne Township has the convention center by the--
Aren't we District Eight, though?
No, that's ISBA District. It's a congressional district.
I was like, Tara Ho, couldn't it be you're the one that's close? Got it, okay.
The one that's close, so that's our congressional district, but yeah, that's, we're in like three different districts depending on, I just look for the Indianapolis address.
Yeah, that's, huh, interesting.
It's been a long meeting, and you all have stuck right in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do adjourn and sign claims.